Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for the amazing blessing of being able to live in this free land and to gather in meetings in places like this and to give thanks for the blessings that you've brought to our community. We give thanks for these people who've gathered here tonight to make decisions and to lead us and guide us as a city. We pray for your spirit to fall upon them, to give them a clear vision and to give them guidance about how to make great decisions that would enable us to continue to push out the freedom that we experience, the opportunities that we have for economic growth and development, and for people to have jobs and homes, and for all of us to be able to raise families and to live in a place where we not only have freedom and we have prosperity, but an amazing place where we have peace and the opportunity to share a life together. We just pray for this in the precious name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Real call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilwoman Pearson. Councilwoman Branum.
Here.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Prochey McVeigh.
Here.
Mayor DeGerris.
Here. Thank you. I'd ask everyone to make sure they silence their cellphones and disclose your interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Moving on to workshop items. Item A, Mr. Tucker Davis will appear before the City Council to provide an update on the Veterans Wall Completion Project.
Tucker Davis, 2730 Mill Street, Popper Bluff. We thought it'd be a good time to give the council an update on the Butler County Wall in front of the Black River Coliseum. Most will remember that this is a project that was participated by five local banks and basically backed by the city, and so it's been renewed, but I thought it'd be a good time to give an update. If anybody has questions, feel free to ask, and I'll answer them best I can. First of all, there's five local banks participating in the program. They're on the loan is First Midwest Bank, Southern Bank, Commerce Bank, People's Community State Bank, and First Missouri State Bank. And we started this project back in '09. Thought it'd be a great idea to go ahead and borrow the funds to finish the wall because we think it's a focal point. It's nice to have some ceremonies down there, and it's been a nice addition to the front of the Coliseum. Started in 2009 with $85,000, and since that time, the balance has come down to $57,287.25. And with this recent payment, took it down to that dollar amount. It's based on the fundraising activities for the year. As it comes in, the money goes implied to the loan. And this year was, it depends on what kind of fundraising activity or efforts they've, what the fruits of their labors have been. But at the current rate, we should have this loan paid off and around, we'll stress around, depending on activity, about seven years. So I'll answer any questions anybody's got.
I'd like to make a comment to all those folks here tonight and ones listening that I serve on that Veterans Wall as committee. I went to a meeting to talk about the wall and finishing the wall several years ago, and they said they needed members and immediately elected me as a member of the Veterans Wall Committee. If there's anyone that would like to serve on that committee and has ideas for fundraising, especially veterans, but if you're not a veteran and want to support the Veterans Wall and serve on that committee, that would be great. You could contact Betty Pritt at the Beehive. She's our secretary and our treasurer. So it would be a good time for folks that would like to be involved in something here to, because that salute's all the veterans and all that have served. There's over 2,000 names on that wall. And if, I'm sure a lot of people listening tonight are watching, and you folks here have visited other Veterans Wall, but ours will compare to anyone. You know, I've been and looked at all the walls except for WWII in Washington, DC, and we could set ours right in there, and it wouldn't degrade it a bit. So I think we have an exceptionally good wall. And again, anyone that would like to serve, just contact Betty at the Beehive and give her your name. She'll give you the meeting notices and when we meet, and you'd be welcome to serve and help out in any way you'd like.
And as well, they continue to sell the bricks, the pavers in front of the memorial wall. It's an excellent way for them to continue to pay for it ongoing. And the support of the Black River Coliseum Director, Bobby Godwin's been awesome as far as helping support that wall too. So any activity is down there as well. But it's a great focal point, great meeting place. Like I said, nothing to, we're very proud of the situation we have down there and the joint venture with the city. So it's an improvement to the city too, and I think it's a nice place. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate your help on all the fundraising activities, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, Ms. Penelope McGaff will appear before the City Council to discuss the upcoming Iron Horse Festival in downtown Popper Bluff.
Penelope McGaff, Executive Director for Downtown Popper Bluff, 101 Oak Street, Popper Bluff. Did you guys receive the report? Last year, we had a really great festival downtown despite the cold weather. We had a really great turnout. This year, we expect an even bigger festival. Some of the things that we've added this year, every year, the VA does a welcome home celebration for their veterans, and they are doing that event in conjunction with the Iron Horse Festival this year, and they're going to do it at the courthouse. And so all of their activities will be combined with ours. So we anticipate a much larger crowd, and they'll bring their car show in with our car show. We've had a lot of new events and a lot of the same things that have worked in the past. But we also come to you tonight to request to sell alcohol at the Iron Horse Festival. Does anybody have any questions about the festival or any of the activities?
Since this is an ongoing thing, I would be in favor of just continuing how we've been going for the last two, three years, because I've visited the Iron Horse Festival, and it's been wonderful. So I think you just need to stay with us.
Thank you.
We just need a verbal approval. So I guess that would be like a motion for the verbal approval.
So moved.
Give a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Item C, Mr. Steve Austin with Craftmiles and Tatum CPA will appear before the City Council to present the annual audit for the city of Popper Bluff for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2012.
Stephen Austin, Craftmiles and Tatum, 1650 West Harper Street in Popper Bluff. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to present the audit this evening. And before we get into the financials, I would like to say a quick thank you to the staff here at City Hall as well as Municipal Utilities for all their assistance during our audit. They answered all of our questions, provided all the documentation that we requested. They didn't withhold any information. They were pretty quick to get everything we needed, and they allowed us to be as efficient as we could during our time with them. So if you have your financials in front of you, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to draw your attention to the table of contents and specifically the third page of the table of contents. You'll see that these financials are 79 pages long. We won't cover all of them this evening. I will spend a few minutes going over the basic financial statements, and then we'll turn our attention to the back of the report to look at the city's federal expenditures, and then we'll conclude with a summary of our audit results. So with that, if you turn one page, which would actually be the fourth page in the financials, you'll see the independent auditor's report. This report outlines that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financials. It outlines that our audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, and that we perform the audit to provide a reasonable assurance that the financials are free of material misstatements. And I think the most important paragraph, if you turn just one page to the second page of the report, the first paragraph you'll see is the opinion paragraph. We have issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which is the best opinion that we as auditors can give, and we're given the opinion that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If there's not any questions, we'll turn to page four. Just real briefly, pages four through 10, you'll see is the management's discussion and analysis. These pages are prepared by the city's management, and they do provide a quick overview of the financial statements that we'll cover this evening. So with that, we'll turn to page 11, and we'll get started with the financial statements. Pages 11 through 13, you'll see the government-wide financials. These report the city's financials as a whole on the accrual basis of accounting, and as you can see, it'll be broken down between your governmental and your business-type activities. On page 11, you have the statement of net position. About halfway down the page, you'll see that the city's total assets at the year end was $146.1 million. Assets were up as a whole a little over $469,000. Governmental activities, you can see $41.2 million. This is an increase of about $5.1 million, while the business-type activities are $104.9 as a decrease of about $4.7. Just a couple of things to point out. First one is the first-line item is your cash and cash equivalents, $13.3 million. This is actually down $5.7 million from last year. Governmental activities saw a decrease of $1.6 million, and the business-type activities saw a decrease of $4.1. And most of the decrease in the cash for the city is due to the capital expenditures and debt repayment. The second item, if you'll look three-quarters of the way down of your asset list, is the long-term receivables, $4.8 million. In 2012, the city entered into an agreement with the Missouri Transportation and Finance Corporation for the loan for the work to be done on the Elk Grove Road and Highway 67 interchange. The loan was roughly $8.9 million, and in that agreement, MOLDOT agreed to pay about $4.6 million of that loan agreement. So that makes up a big bulk of your receivables there. The remaining $4.3 million is the city's obligation, and it'll be reported on, we'll see it on page 12, as a general government and administration expense. The next section you'll see is your total liabilities. The city's total liabilities was just a little over $57 million. Really, one thing to point out, the liabilities did increase by about $2 million. If you'll focus on the second line item from the bottom, the notes payable, it was at $8.4 million. That balances as the remaining balance at year-end of the loan that I had just mentioned. However, in 2012, at the beginning, there was a $5.2 million loan with the Missouri Transportation and Finance Corporation for the Shelby Road work. That loan was paid off in 2012 by the Popper Bluff Regional Transportation Development District, and as we'll see on the next page, that payoff of the loan will be reported as a contribution, a capital contribution. And the bottom line you'll see is total net position for the city as a whole at year-end was a little over $89 million. If there's not any questions, and if you have questions as we go throughout, please just wave your hand and ask. I'll be happy to answer them. On page 12 is the city's statement of activities. Once again, it shows expenses and program revenue broken down by governmental and business-type activities. Most of the activity on this page is pretty comparable to the prior year. There's just a few things I do want to point out. On your general government and administration line item, you'll see the expenses at $9.5 million. This is increased from last year. As I mentioned, $4.3 million of the city's portion of the loan that I mentioned on the previous page is included in that $9.5 million. And if you look at just a couple of columns to the right on the same line item under capital grants and contributions, that's $6.5 million. Once again, that is up, but it's the $5.4 million that was paid by the Transportation Development District for that Shelby Road loan. Principal and interest is included in that. And the other thing I'd like to point out, under your business-type activities, the municipal utilities expenses, $47.1 million. This is actually a decrease of $1 million from the prior year, and based upon the decrease, it's mostly focused on the electric transmission expenses. Turn one more page to page 13. Page 13, you can see the fourth line from the bottom shows the total change in net position for the city as a whole, decreased of $1.3 million. Governmental increased by about $1.1 million, and then the business-type activities was a decrease of $2.4 million. If there's not any questions, we'll turn over to page 14. Pages 14 through 22, you will have your fund financial statements. These financial statements are what most city officials look at on a day-to-day basis. Pages 14 through 17 will be the governmental fund financial statements as well as the reconciliation to reconcile back to the statements that we've already reviewed. And as you can see, your governmental funds will be broken down by the general fund, Highway 67 tax fund, and then your non-major funds. And just as a note, the non-major funds are further broken down in the financials. Schedules 1 and 2, about page 57 through 62, I believe, are those statements. If there's no questions, we'll flip a few pages over to page 18. Pages 18 through 22 are the fund financial statements for the proprietary funds. These statements will show additional detail of the information that we've covered on pages 11 and 12. You can see they're broken down by the municipal utilities fund, the Black River Coliseum Fund, and then your non-major enterprise funds. And once again, just as a note, your municipal utilities funds will be further broken down in the financials on Schedules 5 and 6. And then on your non-major enterprise funds, those are also broken down further in the financials on Schedules 3 and 4. Next page that I'd like to point out is over on page 23. Pages 23 through 52 is the last section of the basic financial statements. These pages are the notes to the financial statements, and they will provide additional analysis and detail of all the financial statements that we've covered this far. Really, just two notes that I'd like to point out, just real briefly. The first one, if you would, flip over to page 38. On page 38, you'll see Note 4 is the capital asset. This note will break down the capital asset activity for the year. As you can see, governmental activities as well as business-type activities. You can see the amount of additions as well as retirements throughout the year, and I think really provide a good information of the capital assets that we, that you can see on page 11. The second note, if you flip over just about four pages to page 42. On page 42, you have Note 6, which is the long-term liabilities. This note here, once again, broken down by governmental and business-type activities, will show the activity concerning the long-term liabilities, which is the debt of the city, the activity for the year, additions to notes, and then subsequent deductions and payoff of principal of all the notes for the city. If there's not any questions on that, at this point, I'd like to turn our attention to the city's federal expenditures. On pages 75 and 76, you'll see all of the federal expenditures that the city expended for the year, broken down by each individual program. And then on the far-right column, you'll see the amount of federal expenditures for each of those programs. And if you'll turn just to page 76, you'll see that in 2012, the city expended $1,966,973 worth of federal expenditures. To kind of give you some comparison, last year, the city spent a little over $888,000 worth of federal expenditure, so a significant increase in 2012. And the last thing I'd like to just touch on is on page 78. On page 78 is Schedule 10, and it's the Schedule of Findings in Question Cost. And as you can see by Part 1, this will provide you the summary of the audit results, just a list of items that we'll go through. An unqualified opinion was issued on the financial statements of the city of Popper Bluff for the year ended December 31, 2012. No material weaknesses and internal control over financial reporting were disclosed. The audit did not disclose any non-compliance which is material to the financial statements of the city, and these three items here relate directly to our audit of the city's financial statements. Everything from this point down relates to our single audit work and our federal compliance over all of the money that the city spent for major programs. The fourth item is no material weaknesses and internal control over major programs were disclosed. We've issued an unqualified opinion on the compliance for those major programs. The audit did not disclose any audit findings, which we were required to report to the OMB Circular 8133. The next section there shows the major programs that we tested compliance on during our single audit test work. And then the last couple lines down from that, you'll see the city of Popper Bluff was determined to be a low-risk audit team, and in order for that to happen is that there cannot be any material weaknesses and internal control for the last two years of single audit work. So really, a good report for the council this evening, not any issues that we came across during our work that was a red flag to us or we felt that we needed to report. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Tomorrow, the next day, if you have questions and you need to ask, be more than happy to send me a phone call. I may be out of the office, and I'll return it as soon as I can get back.
You would say, then, that this audit shows that the staff that work for the city of Popper Bluff do a good job?
The staff is very knowledgeable. In any place you go, if the staff is knowledgeable, it does help. The big thing that we are concerned about is how quickly the question's answered. If we give a question and they, I guess for lack of better words, hum-haw around, you know, it kind of gives us a red flag. Anytime we request information, they're really quick to get it to us. It's not like they've got to make information up. So they're pretty quick with that, and you know, once again, we've got two different staff members, and we did things a little different this year and worked on different work papers. So different people were asking different questions. So it allowed us to change things up to get fresh eyes looking at some items. And just, this is a process that begins for us at the end of December. We go around and take a sample of the inventory at Municipal Utilities at the end of the year, and then we spend a couple of weeks at Municipal Utilities in April, and then we spend roughly three or four weeks down here at City Hall. So by the time we're finished, everybody's used to us being around, and really appreciate everybody's patience with us during that time.
No further questions. I entertain a motion, a second to accept the audit is presented.
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate the seat. Item D, the City Council review a proposal ordinance providing for the assessment of additional municipal court costs. Said costs be used for the sheriff's retirement fund surcharge.
Do I need to do that? Why don't you explain this to us while he did it to me?
Do my best. Right now, as the council is aware, when fines are collected in the municipal court, there are court costs also assessed, and those court costs go for various things. Some of that money comes back to the city. There was an opinion issued by the Attorney General's Office back in April that concluded that the previous exemption for municipal courts from a surcharge of $3 that goes to the sheriff's retirement fund, which had always been thought to be an exemption, was determined to not be an exemption anymore. So I didn't say that very well, but basically, we have never as a city collected a $3 surcharge that went to the sheriff's retirement fund. The Attorney General has issued an opinion that says that that exemption has been removed for several years. With that opinion, the Office of the State Courts Administrator sent a letter out about the end of June to all the municipalities, saying that at the end of August, that we were going to be required to collect this surcharge of $3 on each municipal violation. I can tell you that at the Municipal Attorneys Conference held last month, there was a lot of discussion about this particular surcharge, and universally, it was opposed by the municipal attorneys, some of whom are also municipal judges. And one judge in particular is leading an effort to have this overturned. He feels it's unconstitutional, and I expect there's going to be some litigation over this. The point being is that the, with all due respect, the sheriffs have nothing to do with municipal court. They don't serve us in any way through the municipal court. And so the question is, why should there be a requirement to collect that fee to go to the sheriff's fund when the sheriff has nothing to do with municipal court? There are some cities who have passed resolutions saying that they are not going to collect this fee. I can tell you that. We're honored to have Terry McVeigh here, City Attorney from Kennett. I talked to him before the meeting. He tells me that Kennett is taking a kind of wait-and-see approach about this toward the end of the month to see what's going to happen. It's a little bit hard to advise the council what to do. I really feel like in the long run, that this is going to be something that is not going to be required to be collected by cities. I can't tell you that now, and it's possible that at the end of the month, you know, we may be forced to collect it. But at this point, everything is very much up in the air, and it's really hard to say what's going to happen. But all I can tell you is, that is what the Office of the State Courts Administrator has said. The legal challenge to that is going to be that the OSC, as what they're called for short, does not have the authority to impose a fee upon municipalities. So those are the facts, and I simply present that to the council to see if the council wishes to take any action, either imposing it or to not, or to say you're not going to impose that. Or we've got till the end of the month, basically, to probably make a decision, so there's a little time to think about it. That's about all I can tell you at this point. That's where we are.
At this point in time, if we are required to do it at the end of August, we won't have any choice, will we?
No, we wouldn't.
So we'd have to go ahead and collect it, and then if it is ruled that it's not constitutional, then we could stop, right?
That is true. That is true. You know, unfortunately, the burden is going to be on those people who have to pay these fines and these additional costs. pay these, these fines and these additional court costs, which I can't tell exactly what they are right now, but it's going to add three dollars to every one of those. So it's, it's, and it will probably, they estimate, raise about three million dollars for the Sheriff's Retirement Fund per year, which is, I have nothing against the Sheriff's Retirement Fund, it's just a question of where the money should come from.
And we could put that three dollars in our, our retirement fund for our employees of the city, and, I mean, which we don't and we wouldn't in the future, but...
Right.
I think the point is, Wally said the Sheriff Department has nothing to do with the cases that are run through over here.
Right, yeah.
Generally, so it's kind of strange.
By the same token, if we place prisoners in a county jail, we have to, the city pays an expense for that. There's a cost for us to do that.
Yes.
And, and should.
Yeah.
So councillor, are you advising that, well, I shouldn't say advising, are you recommending that we take the wait-and-see approach, or?
I think that's what I would suggest right now, that, you know, I mean, there, there may be some further developments by the time the council meets again in a couple of weeks. And I, that's what I would suggest right now, is let's just monitor it and, and see what happens here over the next few weeks, because there may be some further activity. You know, I, I get information on this and I get emails on this literally every day. It's a very hot-button issue right now, and I have a feeling that there's going to be more to come. I don't think we've heard the last of it.
There's actually no cost to the city. The cost is really to the person who has a fine.
That is true, yes.
And we're just a pass-through. We just collect it and send it on.
Right.
And it's not for our local sheriff, it's for all sheriffs in all of Missouri.
It is, right.
So we'll make sure that it's not going straight into just Butler County Sheriff's Pocket.
No, no, it's not strictly Butler County. It will go to the sheriff's, the, the state retirement fund for the sheriffs.
So do we need to make a motion to put the, pass it on through to our voting session for next time? Or are we just going to leave it here? Where are we going to leave it?
My recommendation would be to take no action on it tonight, and let's see where we are in a couple of weeks.
Do we need to table it for that because it's on a workshop item?
entertain a motion to table it till the August nineteenth meeting?
Well, now, on the twenty-eighth, is that when most laws go into effect?
Yes, that's when it would go into effect. So there would still be, if council decided to go ahead and impose that, there's still time to do that.
Like I said originally, we won't have much choice, will we, to impose it? If, if the, the way it stands now, unless something has changed, we'll have to do it.
More than likely. You know, and then some would argue that, that OSC, again, is exceeding its authority and that they, they can't impose upon cities a, a, more, more or less another fee or tax. There's even a question of Hancock violation, so there are all kinds of issues flying around. But there, the, the judge who's leading the charge on this has very strong feelings about it, and, and he feels like he's, he's building a good case against it. I don't know if all that will be resolved before the end of the month, that's the problem.
Yeah. Well, it'd be two weeks, but if we waited till, tabled it till the first meeting in September, then we should have much more information than we might have two weeks from tonight, too. That'd give us some months to, to gain information.
Well, that's true. Of course, that gets past the August twenty-eighth, when all these things go into effect.
So if it goes into effect August twenty-eighth, and folks that have fines, we would not be able to go back and collect for that. We would just have to start it up whenever we choose to start it up, like in September or whenever. All right? I mean, those that would go to court between the time that we meet and the time we pass it.
Right. I wish I could be more definitive with you.
Can you just update us in two weeks on the issue?
Sure.
Okay. I don't see any reason why we should move forward on it, just wait two weeks, like he's suggesting.
But with that, do we need to table it, or, or do we just? I would think we'd have to either table it or move it on to workshop and then vote it up or down at that point.
I entertain a motion to table it and move it to workshop and voting session if necessary on the nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
It worked.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council Review of Recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board Regarding a Resolution Pertaining to the Operations of the Grand River Dam Authority.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Tom Ryder, MISO General Manager, all right, let me go back, Municipal Electric Systems of Oklahoma, MISO, which we're a member of, has stated that the Oklahoma Governor Mary Fallon has issued an executive order creating a task force which sole purpose is to break up the GRDA and sell its assets. As you're aware of, we receive approximately seventy percent of our wholesale power from GRDA, and GRDA's reasonable wholesale power costs help the city to keep rates affordable for the citizens of Popper Bluff. The sale and privatization of GRDA would be, in our opinion, detrimental to the city. Mr. Ryder has asked all GRDA's public power customers to establish a resolution calling upon Governor Mary Fallon to rescind this executive order, and we discussed this earlier at the advisory board and would recommend that to the council. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask.
I guess from what we talked about, the utility board, they affect, if that goes through and they would sell all that, there's no telling what our power cost would be.
That's correct.
So...
I know a lot, I don't know of any private company that works that cost. So, you know, if you look at investor-owned utility, they're allowed to make a twelve percent rate of return. So that's probably a twelve percent increase automatically.
And it's something that generally comes up from time to time. It's usually some renegade in the state legislature in Oklahoma that, that gets it going. It's usually not the governor's office.
Right, not at the top.
And in this case, the governor is wanting to look at privatization, and from their general fund standpoint, it would, it would be a windfall in money, but it would certainly hurt the customers that are currently sixty, I think, utilities in Oklahoma.
Sixty, Minnesota.
Four outside Oklahoma use Grand River Dam Authority as, as firm power suppliers. And there's no question it would impact all of those individuals.
Right.
And Oklahoma would stand to get, the state would stand to get a lot of money out of that, which they put very little money in it, the way I understand. A lot of it was federal programs and different fundings. If, am I correct on that bill, that, that built those dams and, and set up the power units?
No, I believe the state paid for the, the Pensacola Dam.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's why it stayed around. Yeah.
No further questions. I entertain a motion, second, to move this item to the voting session to be held August nineteenth.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, City Council Review of Proposal Ordinance Establishing a Procedure for Disclosure of Potential Conflicts of Interest and Substantial Interest for Certain Municipal Officers.
This is just a requirement that we do on an annual basis. Missouri Ethics Commission requires cities with budgets over a million. I think I am the only person that has to do that at this particular point in time, but the, it is required that we do an ordinance that states we're going to.
I make a motion, we move item F to work to the voting session to be held on August sixteenth?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
I'll leave the mics on.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the City Council Discuss a Contract for the Acquisition of Property Through the Flood Buyout Program for a Stormwater Basin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a continuation of a project that we started several years ago. It's actually not the flood buyout program, it is a flood management project for the stormwater basin project. And it is community development block grant funds, and the city is contributing local match money to that. And to build one of the basins at the root, kind of at the back of Popper Bluff Square, we need to acquire a parcel of property, and that's what this is considering. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have about it. I don't know how much information you have in your packet about this.
Yes, I think they have the contract that, that I prepared and discussed with Pam Osborne of Osborne Paint and Wallpaper. I think we ought to point out, the, the sheet has agreed to the purchase price of twenty-five thousand dollars, which is less than the appraised value. Is that correct?
Yes, we did have an appraisal during, and the appraisal was in the upper thirties.
So...
I don't have the exact figure, but I know it was in excess of thirty-six thousand dollars that it appraised at.
Well, Ms. Osborne's being a, a good citizen.
It is going to be beneficial to the residential areas and the commercial areas up in that, in that part of Popper Bluff. This is one of six that we intend to either build or improve upon. The original proposal had eight, and due to technical difficulties with some of the locations, and we didn't feel some of them were cost-effective, we deleted two from the process. This granted being administered by Ozark-Foot Hill Regional Planning Commission, and hopefully we can start some of the projects this year and then finish up next year with the basin projects. We also have an agreement with the VA, which is outside of what we're talking about here, but we have to get all of the things in place before community development block grant officials will let us proceed. So this is one of those steps that we need to take.
No other questions. I entertain a motion, second, to move this item to the voting session to be held August nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the City Council Review an Agreement for Engineering Services for the Industrial Park Drainage Improvements.
And this is a grant we just, just received in, to improve drainage flows in our industrial park, and this is for engineering services. There's a scope of services in back, it's for surveying, for design fees, for construction inspection, and there's a breakdown in the back of the contract also. It's with Smith &amp; Company Engineering.
There are no questions. I entertain a motion, second, to move this to the voting item, voting session to be held August nineteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to Action Required Items. Bill number seventy-six zero eight, City Council Take Action on An Ordinance Accepting a Bid for Demolition and Asbestos Removal Relative to the Flood Buyout Program.
Move for first reading is seven-six-zero-eight.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven-six-zero-eight, an ordinance accepting a bid for demolition and asbestos removal in conjunction with the city's flood buyout project.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy-six-zero-eight.
Second.
Motion second, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seventy-six-zero-eight, an ordinance accepting a bid for demolition and asbestos removal in conjunction with the city's flood buyout project.
Move for adoption of seven-six-zero-eight.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Carton-McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerr?
Yes. Thank you. Bill seventy-six-zero-eight is adopted. Bill number seven-six-zero-nine, the City Council Take Action on An Ordinance Amending Chapter six-twenty-five of the Code of Ordances for the City of Popper Bluff Entitled Pawn Brokers.
Move for first reading, bill number seventy-six-zero-nine.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven-six-zero-nine, an ordinance amending chapter six-twenty-five of the Code of Ordances for the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Pawn Brokers and Others Dealing in Second-Hand Property, to require the establishment and maintenance of a computer database for pawn and purchase transactions by pawn brokers and others dealing in second-hand property.
Move for adoption, bill number seventy-six-zero-nine.
Second.
I think we need second reading first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move for second reading, seventy-six-zero-nine.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number seven-six-zero-nine, an ordinance amending chapter six-twenty-five of the Code of Ordances for the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, entitled Pawn Brokers and Others Dealing in Second-Hand Property, to require the establishment and maintenance of a computer database for pawn and purchase transactions by pawn brokers and others dealing in second-hand property.
Move for adoption of seven-six-zero-nine.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out to the council, I, I think you all have this in front of you. I had highlighted the provisions, I took the chapter that we currently had and highlighted the provisions that had some changes. Some of them very minor, but the, really the crux of it is on the second page under section six-twenty-five oh-three-oh, and, and that's where it gets into the electronic reporting. And I just want to say that, you know, this is being done at no cost to the, the businesses. It won't cost them anything to do this. Yeah, and it, it appears to be a tool that's working well in other cities. But I did want to point out that I, I did make a few changes which are highlighted. Our, the, the current ordinance that we have made it a voluntary thing for pawn brokers only. This would make it mandatory, and it would include pawn brokers and others dealing in second-hand property, various types of things. It, and the exemptions are the same as they were before. We're not talking about retail jewelry stores and things of that nature, you know, so it's, it's pretty specific as to who it's going to pertain to. Would also like to commend Detective David Sutton. He put a lot of work in on this and brought this to our attention, so I think he should be commended for that.
I would have a question, second-hand dealer, do we have kind of a broad...
Definition? If you look in the, the first page, you know, in paragraph A, I didn't assign a specific definition, but it is, it is included, there's a definition there in that paragraph. And also, well, paragraphs A and B, I'm sorry, both of those.
Would this affect, because this is a big business thing in Popper Bluff, like flea markets, where they, is that...
I, I think it could. I don't think it, it automatically will. It, it's, it's mostly talking about those businesses who are dealing with second-hand jewelry, coins, watches, that sort of thing. You know, in a, in a relatively large, you know, flea market, you might have a few items scattered here and there, but we're, we're talking about those that primarily would deal in second-hand gold, silver jewelry, coins, that sort of thing.
One of my concerns was, you said it doesn't cost the, the business owners any, anything, but what if they don't have a computer and they have to go out and buy one? And I, I know everyone thinks that probably they should have one already, but I don't know that they do. So are, are you talking that they would have to go buy one and it would still be a cost to them?
I think it assumes they, that they already have the computer in place.
It just assumes that.
Am I right about that?
I'm sorry.
It already assumes they would have a computer. But the question was, what about a business that did not have a computer?
I believe they could access it from a library computer or, if we're talking about a small enough business, as long as they did it by the end of the day, they could go use a, a computer in another location.
Earlier, I talked to you on the phone and I asked you about the flea market thing, because that really bothers me, because that's a tremendous amount of work that we would be asking people to do. But he's saying it could.
Well, I'd have to defer, you know, the legal opinion to, to the attorney, but I don't believe that as, as most flea markets operate, where you rent a booth and you sell your own property, it won't apply to that.
And I would agree with that.
If you had a flea market that operated where somebody, where somebody was there that would purchase second-hand property from a person that walked in off the street, then I think that flea market might, it might apply to them. But then they're operating as a resale shop in addition to being a flea market, and I think you could probably get into a situation where some of the stuff they had that they were selling on consignment or selling, renting table space to a third party, wouldn't be reported leads online, but anything that the owner of the flea market took in personally and sold themselves might actually have to be reported leads online.
Well, basically, we're pawn shops and just the two or three consignment stores we have in town.
Right.
I, I see this as a good thing. I know Mr. The mayor, he's been in law enforcement for years, and the biggest problem with burglaries is trying to track down your items that are stolen. I think this gives you all a, a tool. I think this gives you all a tool, and I hope that we see several other local cities get involved in this.
And it also gives the citizens a tool, when they do their inventory of their house, they can go online and put their items in with serial numbers, they pop up somewhere, they automatically get a hit, and then we can get their property back for them.
Seems like we have had a lot of that going on lately. I mean, a lot of burglaries and that kind of thing, so, I mean, if this could help, it might be a pretty good thing.
Well, it'll definitely help.
No other comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Navshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes. Thank you. Bill 7609 is adopted. Bill number 7610, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for administrative services between the City of Poplar Bluff and Ozark-Foot Hills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the Industrial Park Drainage Grant.
Move for first reading, bill number 7610.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7610, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for administrative services between the City of Poplar Bluff and Ozark-Foot Hills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the Industrial Park Drainage Grant.
Move for second reading, that's 7610.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7610, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for administrative services between the City of Poplar Bluff and Ozark-Foot Hills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the Industrial Park Drainage Grant.
Move for adoption, bill number 7610.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navshir?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes. Thank you. Bill 7610 is adopted. Bill number 7611, the City Council will take action on an ordinance vacating a portion of an easement.
Move for first reading, bill number 7611.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7611, an ordinance vacating a right-of-way and utility easement located on the K-Mark property in the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading, bill number 7611.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Bill number 7611, an ordinance vacating a right-of-way and utility easement located on the K-Mark property in the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes. Thank you. Bill number 7611 has passed. Resolution number 1778, the City Council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application for a CDBG grant to extend the railroad spur in the industrial park.
Move for reading a resolution, 1778.
Second.
Motion second for the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Resolution number 1778, a resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, stating intent to seek funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program and authorizing the mayor to pursue activities in an attempt to secure funding.
Move for adoption, resolution number 1778.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 1778 has passed. Resolution number 1779, the City Council will take action on a resolution making appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move for the reading, a resolution 1779.
Second.
Motion second for the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Duncan?
Resolution number 1779, a resolution making an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Poplar Bluff. Mr. Mayor, that resolution would reflect that Lynn Morse is the recommended candidate for that.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Navshir?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brannon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McFay?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 1779 is adopted. Item double G, the City Council and City of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.021.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14 in the revised statutes of Missouri.
Mayor, I make a motion, we move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Duncan? Not a whole lot tonight. We, you have in front of you, we did get approval on our cost share application for the signalization of PP Highway and Shelby Road. MoDOT will be sharing that cost with us. We'll be using some SCP funds on that project. We've also begun union negotiations with the Street Department unit. We have had one meeting, I will try to have some, the negotiations, utilities generally goes first, there's, happened in January of this year, Street Department comes next, and then the Fire Department. The Street Department has an October 1, September 30 deadline, Fire Department a December